We'll take a motion to approve the minutes on the agenda.
One more motion.
Moving second for discussion. And one of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold some time. Rich.
Next week I'll have the DOT program and budget for us review that's due fifteen so. Just going through some things here on program and budget since everything seemed to be fluid from December until now. Do my best to figure out what projects we're gonna have and on the program projects that we may do depending on TIF. One thing that I've been looking at for quite a while is whether or not we can. Afford some of these used motor grinders they have out there and I think we can. We're gonna have. I can amend my. Can I amend the equipment budget? And I think we're pretty much. Done spending money on construction. There's some money left in construction to bring down into equipment. And what I can do, because right now what I'm forecasting right now with the carrier balance, I've got a pretty decent carrier balance, but remember. We can't buy equipment with TIF. We can only use local dollars. So you might look at it and say, well, we've got this carrier balance by projects, but well, we can't buy equipment with anything other than local dollars. So. Looking at it from that standpoint, there's gonna be, there could be some money left over and that's based on. You know, the carrier balance from last year when we do, it's a mess. I mean, when you try to figure out carrier balances when you're programming. I don't know my carrier balance is gonna be for this year, but I'm programming for next year already. So I'm just anticipating what it's gonna be. So right now, we're gonna plan on what I can do is reduce my. Equipment budget for fiscal twenty-three if I can bring money in from twenty-two yet and move things around to kind of. Save face a little bit for twenty-three because the way things are programmed right now, fiscal twenty-three is gonna have a carry balance of like less than forty thousand dollars, which is too tight. But that's all depending on how efficient we can be with other things and whether we get everything that we want to and everything else. So. We always try to budget for a small carrier balance. We always kind of care over big ones anyway, just because of the way things work out. But. What I'm asking is, is if it's okay, I wanna start, they've got. Maybe. Four of these. I, I, I put my name on four machines just because I didn't want to miss out. These guy, these machines have less than. Two thousand hours on them. They're all wheel drives. They're twenty fifteens. They're gonna come with a lift group and a wing plow, but they won't have a front plow. We can modify stuff as we need. And without warranty, we can add warranty later on, or we can figure that out when we get general pricings around two hundred and forty thousand dollar per machine. That's. Darn cheap for compared to new ones. Plus, if you're waiting on a new one, it's gonna take a long time to get a neighbor. So while they're older machines, they're, they're low hours and we can also trade in some of our other, they'll take trade too. So we can probably bring them prices down. Quite a bit more. I just don't, until I know for sure where they're gonna pull the trigger on it and start negotiating what we can do. I just wanna see if it's okay with you guys if I try to finagle some things around here to get some newery. So. That newer, well, newer than what we have equipment, but I mean, it's a way to get. Two all wheel drive machines in our fleet with less than two thousand hours on it. We can take some of our. Newer cats that have six, seven thousand hours and put them in the back of. Pool.
Okay, so you're still trading off a couple.
We'll try to trade off a couple of them. So.
Are they available or are they waiting for new ones?
They're actually what they are. They're leased, they're leased machines. Minneapolis maybe.
So they say, so they're available, but are they available when that person's new machine comes?
They, since they lease them, they just cycle through. So once winter's done, they'll be available for us and whether they've got two thousand, they'll be around that two thousand dollar. So. To me, I think it's a good idea with the, with the aging fleet we have. Yeah, we're gonna get some used machines in here, but. They're low hour used machines and they're still. Parts are still available. I mean, they're not.
Right.
Same area cat that we have now.
Correct. Yeah, well, you know, exactly the same other than they got a wheel drive. So, kind of thinking I might head that direction. I wanna give them within the next two weeks. I wanna give. Them the thumbs up to go ahead and pull the trigger on it. Just. Because they'll be available. They were supposed to be available by the end of March and it might be the end of April, but we're not in dire straits right now. We're coming out of winter. We have some time here, but I just didn't want to miss out on an opportunity to get. Some use. I, I know they're used, but they're just not.
The hours you already put on.
We probably put a thousand years on your, depending on, so I mean. What they've got on for hours is two years worth of us and their seven year old machines. So I mean lightly used. I mean, when you think about it.
It's, yeah, that makes sense.
So if you guys are okay with that, I might just kind of keep pursuing that a little bit. And I'm still trying, like I said, I'll program projects, but. You know, we just, you know, with all everything up in the area, what we're gonna do. I'll do the best I can at predict, projecting what we're gonna do for project. I mean, we, we have some project we know we're gonna have to do. So those will be in there, but they'll leave some other ones in there too that we may or may not do depending on what TIF does for us. And like, once, once we get out of this fiscal year, we'll lower the money sets for twenty-three. It's just, it's always tough to try to predict six months in advance because. Now the fuel prices are up. Where does that put us for our fuel budget? We gotta get our salt in yet. We haven't taken any delivery of our salt. So there's, you know, hundreds and some thousand dollars for the salt we gotta bring in yet. Fuel could be for the, to fill out the rest of the year, we could be at three hundred thousand dollars in fuel costs. Just depends. So. It's hard to kind of, let's throw it on the dart of the dartboard really, but we can be pretty close to where we need to be.
That stuff's coming down now, so.
Yeah, hopefully. Yeah. So anyway, I just wanted to give you a, I want you to know that I think it's probably a good idea for us to start. If we've got equipment needs and, like I said, I think buying, buying a new all wheel drive machine is almost out of our capabilities. And then how long do we wait? We can get something down and get the fleet, get things moving. It's gonna get, you know, send some of this old stuff down the road. So.
Said, even if you ordered, now you probably wouldn't have anything. You'd be lucky to get it by next winter.
Well, I ordered a machine and in the fall, I was supposed to get it from Mission County. Supposed to get it in January and I won't get it till it's my then. So.
Can you be able to get me numbers before the end of the month?
Any other questions, Rich?
I sent you out a new doodle for meeting again.
I got her.
Kind of opened it up a little bit more instead of restricting it to just noon. It seems like it's hard to get everybody together.
I responded.
All right. I didn't, I know a couple of people have, but I didn't jump on it yet.
That's fine. Drainage, some drainage claim. No questions.
Questions, how much to approve?
I'll second it for discussion. Post things on. Regular claims. Motion to approve the claims.
Motion to approve claims.
Two second.
No second.
Second, new for the discussion. We're not always ever say aye.
Aye.
Hold some time motion. Okay. Reports, reports today. Reports payroll.
So I would like to. Um, I'm gonna be promoting Chelsea. Things are gonna be changing in my office. So I wanna increase her salary.
Yeah, we'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
I will say.
Second, for discussions, we're none of us, every say aye. Hold some time, will she care? Okay. Liquor license.
I need some.
No, I got you. All right, manure management.
More.
A smart, yes, okay. Yeah, there's already, there was no questions on that. Take a motion to acknowledge.
A motion to acknowledge. All second.
Moving in second. Discussion, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posting some motion to. Okay. To hold, I guess, huh?
Oh, okay.
You're on the list.
Which one?
Home.
So we've had the phone discussion for quite some time. Our current phone system is not that old, but we're looking at replacing some handsets. I know Jake's. Jake is dying. There's a couple of other ones that are dying and, and this is a good time for us to move to a new system. It's got some better capabilities. And then one that's tied to WCTA.
Okay.
Currently, right now, we're tied to Midwest Technologies and, and spurred. But local, you know, better, I think better response, faster response. WCTA. I do have it in my budget. That was a budget item this year to pay for that, but I just wanted to see if you guys wanted to do art funds on that. Or I can simply take it out of the budget. It's eighteen nine for the hardware installation. And it's seven hundred something a month. For the monthly fees on that, which is pretty competitive.
It's always possible. That's a great thing. That's for greater good of everything here for accounting and the taxpayers. You know, if you didn't have to take it out of a budget, it would be okay. You know, or portions of it maybe. I guess, I don't know. What do you guys think?
Say it's a good place for ARP. I'd say it's a good place for ARP money. Okay.
Wanna make that, can we make that?
Can we make that this early? You have to wait till August.
Okay. I mean, I just, if we can do it.
Can we do it early in like that?
Well, technically, we still have money because.
Cause that hasn't happened.
It hasn't happened yet. And by the time that gets rolling.
That was the deal where we had.
Yeah.
Would you say eighteen?
Eighteen nine.
And we have sixteen. Yeah. And you asked us if we want, if we should do the whole amount of the sixteen. I remember that email.
We got, I mean, we got that seven hundred thousand sitting at this earmark there so that if we did start seeing bills, which we're not going to because the bid. We got, we got small, but we, we haven't even bid the project yet. So it's not like we're getting a hundred thousand dollar bills, bills coming in. So.
I think we ought to do, I think we ought to do the whole eighteen.
I think so too, for now.
Yeah. I don't think we should invite it out. It just gives me too much paperwork.
Yeah. Like the, get it on through.
Excellent action. Okay, I'll get the wheels rolling with the telephone. Okay. And let everybody know when that happens.
Might take a year to get the phones from.
You never know. I know I've been talking to Jeff about it. We have seen when we first got our quote, it was a. One phone system and now we're on to the next generation just because we've been having this discussion. So. Waiting wasn't, wasn't a bad thing in this respect.
So more, fully more updated. So.
Different catching the tail end of one generation. We're catching the.
Beginning of another.
Beginning of another.
So either you have headaches or.
Well, we'll have headaches. There's no doubt about it. It's gonna be a much better system, much more robust.
Okay.
It sits held up fairly well.
Salesman once more.
Oh, I, I think I was a bridge.
There you go. All right. Jim Hansen, Work County Conservation Board and Joel, possible art project quotes for cameras, county parks.
I do actually. Yeah. So. I can't figure you were gonna be the guy who's gonna be the salesman. So the security committee, and I think in, in this meeting, we had a discussion about, you know, what we can do with some of your money. Since we've had some issues at the parks and we want a little bit more visibility. Those we've engaged with Heartland Business Systems to come to us with some solutions for, for wireless. Internet coverage out at the parks and also with camera coverage of the parks. They came in with a product called Verkata. Verkata is a, it's a, it's a really, really good camera system. The sheriff has been in on the demonstration along with Jim. It's, it's a smart camera system. So actually we can program in license plate numbers. And it will let us know if a license plate app or a partial license plate happens to go by. We can program in vehicle colors. We can also put in facial recognition. So if there's a certain individual, we don't want going in the parks that we banned. And we can load that into the system. If that person does show up and the cameras catch them, it will alert us if that happens. So, and this is coverage for both Keenans and Worth County Lake. Just the two, yeah, the two there. And this is fully installed. So this would be all the equipment for the wireless, for the cameras. Then coming in and installing it all. The only thing that we don't have right now is fiber into the Worth County Lake facility. But when bigger telephone said they'd get that in.
Assume it's at the road, not at the driveway, but at the next road back.
Yeah, that was part of their initial berry when they, right. That was the first neighborhood to get it.
Oh, really?
And just always had it. Okay. And they said they would, that, that's no charge to count.
Okay. But then it'll be a monthly.
Yes.
Your monthly fee, your monthly fee.
But I guess it was works. Sure. Possible detections there.
The system, from my standpoint, the system is really impressive. And it is cloud based, so we can access it from anywhere.
So that camera system, you had enough, does he have enough? He's gonna be seeing it in his office or will probably monitoring us or?
We, yeah, it's a different system than what we currently have. We have a GenTech system. So we'll be able to access it with our home cell phones. Those that are out working. We'll be able to do something in our office, but to put it up on the same screen with our GenTech generator, we won't be able to do that.
So I'd assume if you inputted a license plate number, then the deputies would get a.
Some sort of an alert. Yeah.
Yeah.
But the one thing after looking at that, we already know we're gonna be spending some money with them cameras on the outside. We haven't even showed up yet. Maybe we should look at them for the in town, in cameras too and have them come do a bid because. The technology on that compared to what we currently have, it's night and day difference. It's.
So we do have Heartland Business and Verkata coming in the eighteenth of April to do a site survey for the courthouse and the public health building. And then also we're going to look at them as, as far as a solution for Jackie's election, uh, security to satisfy some of the administrative rules that are not currently.
CDA, but if this was to be a grant for us to serve to a project like that. Very possible, you know, on, or ones of whatever too, but I mean. It's not a big project.
It's, it's going to be, so this project with the, with the two parks and the wireless, I mean, like, there's a lot of labor in that one, but. Fifty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-seven, I think twenty-six of that is labor.
That's pretty close.
All right.
Yeah.
I did say that's the two parks. That's the two parks, two parks. So that's, that's, and we were thinking this was a good Harper project. I think that's, is that like? Do you remember how many cameras? Is it like thirteen cameras or something like that? I believe you're right. Yeah, thirteen cameras and then three wireless access points. And that would provide wireless access for the, for the campground. And then also we would just have a switch for. The shelter house at Keenans if, cause that's our continuity of government backup site. So it won't be a live switch. It'll just be there if we ever need. To throw in. If we have to move to that. It's nice place.
Every day.
Taking this special call out there and working after day. But interior wise, though, if we go down the road and the, the courthouse as a whole, it, some of the features they have were pretty incredible because they actually. On their camera systems, they will know and. Record every time a door opens, right? Like for Jackie's election security, if it's just passage in and out of the vault. Anytime someone walks through, it's gonna be in or out of the vault, it'll log that. That's good. The, the, the door access Jim was talking about, also they do have a Bluetooth system. So instead of handing out the fobs and everything else, we could actually just give everybody one on their phone. And then they could follow through. They could just walk towards the doors and open them. Okay. So there is, like, like the sheriff said, this, this system is, you know, generational night and day between what we've got currently. So, you know, I think. It's worth a look. I know Marion County just installed the same system about two months ago and they're incredibly happy with it.
And it is transferable over to a new building where our current system, it is, but there's a lot of that stuff that's just dying, which is.
Right. So. Yeah. If we build it in a new system, it's gonna plug and play.
Yeah, the, the current system is tied to controller boards.
Yep.
So if you go into the interview room in the sheriff's office, you will see controller boards up on the wall. These are totally independent. They're, you know, they're, they're, they're cloud based system. So there's no controller boards to worry about. As long as you can get a signal to them there. Get one and play.
He was out in Utah and was able to open a door in Sacramento with his home. That if a vendor would come during the, you could open the door and let him in and.
It's. It's scary that they're now doing this there.
We haven't seen a movie for fifteen years.
It's real.
If you, if we have like a white person as a warrant, you could put their picture in there and we give an alert if you come into the park or come into the building.
Nice feature. Fifty-six. I mean, especially a lot of out of state people, we're, we're getting the type continues. I mean, you know, they're, some of the nicest people in the country that have come in for a while.
For me to talk good about technology, it's a huge.
Like it or not, it is. Yeah. Okay.
Well, I know the ARP committee was pretty well in favor of using funds towards this type of project because we knew the benefit it would gain. We've been having so much problems the last two years. It'd be nice to get a picture. I'll, you know, get in front of some of this stuff.
And that's the other thing with the technology too is, is that. I won't say they're vandal proof, but it, it senses if someone is approaching the camera to spray paint a lens or whatever and you got, and all that stuff is. Captured.
Even though they do the damage, it's captured.
Yeah. Yeah, because that's what, when they were explaining that, you do the whole, wow, that's impressive.
So I, so the question legal wise, we have to put up surveillance warning signs or whatever. You're being watched.
Yep.
In this situation.
Big brother.
Yeah. I'm sure it's minimal, but.
Or wherever the entrance is, I would say.
And I'm fairly certain we actually still have surveillance signs in our sign pile. Just this shelter house at Keenans used to be under surveillance and Deer Creek Park was under surveillance for a while. So we have actual sets of surveillance signs already. And this project will be, you know, it's, we've got to get the, you know, when bigger telephone, we'll have to get the fiber done. So, you know, we're looking at summer, fall, probably before we can get it probably installed.
They were always gonna dig fiber out there anyway.
Camp downs.
Yeah. So. Keenans, the fiber's already there. The fiber's already run to the building. It's just. Putting it in the building and turning it on.
Light it up and go. So, like, probably a little off subject here, but. With the fiber going in out there, campgrounds, you'd be offering wifi out there. So is that gonna be a four fee?
It's gonna be.
In the fee.
It'll be in the fee. In our last board meeting, we increased our fee.
Happy times deal that they, you have to sign up for wifi out there or internet out there if you want. It's so much more. So I'm just curious.
Yeah, with these access points, we can put, I think, eight different SSIDs, which is the eight different feeds.
Yep.
Off those radios. So if we wanna do, you know, whatever, you know, an internal, just like we do here, you know, we have an internal, we have a guest, we have a private.
Right.
You know, we can, we can slice and dice it. They're the only thing that they talked to us about the actual wifi, what it's gonna be based out of the restroom at Worth County Lake. And so. As you move away, it'll, it'll diminish.
Correct.
But they said it still should be pretty good unless you have all fifteen sites trying to watch Netflix at once or something. Hope that won't happen unless it's raining. But most people that go to the park, they're doing it for that reason.
A lot of the kids outside running around, they always said not watching Disney. So, yeah. Okay. All right. So anything else we gotta act on that? Good there?
So you wanna razz over that for next week?
I suppose we should, right?
And then if we're talking about other cameras, is it more beneficial to talk about it all together? Would you get some kind of volume discount or?
So it would be, yes, but we're already talking, I mean, those folks are coming in to do the site survey. So we will bundle those into this other one as well.
You gotta have treasurer's office in there too.
Yeah.
All the facilities is.
On the campus.
Public health.
Yeah, we got done some there.
Some of that you gotta be careful where you place the cameras.
We'll probably be just replacing the ones that we put in up there. Okay. So you're saying we're gonna do it all in one big? Well, this will be a separate project.
Okay.
But as far as purchasing goes, they're gonna let us, as far as the volume purchasing, we can take advantage of that.
Yeah, I just didn't want to lose out on that.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Like I said, they'll be here the eighteenth and doing the site survey and then getting us, you know, whatever that, that quote is, but we will be looking at door access along with camera system.
Okay. Right. Almost incentives for FY twenty-four. Especially possible action.
That, that's just where if we decide we're going to do the five percent. Incentive for. The people who. Are involved in wellness and do what they're supposed to do, they will. Pay five percent less than the people that don't. So the example that I, I gave you guys at the beginning or throughout.
Basically, if you don't participate well, unless you're gonna pay five percent on your check.
Basically, yeah.
That's what needs to happen.
Five percent more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just depends. We were just, we didn't know whether we were gonna give them a year to get their act together or right off the bat.
We're gonna have to. You can't just.
It would, it would take effect next year.
Yeah. That's why I want them to be aware of it now so that they know that they need to complete their programs and everything and.
We've been warned for four years.
I'm guessing they haven't all heard it.
Obviously.
But last year, I mean, we lost out on three percent. Again, and at the rates, the rate.
Race.
Goes up and down like crazy and more up than down.
Three percent.
At the price of health insurance, it's just five percent is too big a figure.
Definitely. So I mean, I'm, I'm all for that, that we. People don't wanna participate in the wellness program, then they'll pay five percent of their insurance premium.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm just wondering, would that have to be negotiated in the union contract, which is do this all?
I would probably sit and answer that would be yes. We need to run by Renee. I mean, you know, that'd be something that can negotiate it be whether we give it or not. That it would probably have to go through it, yes.
Are we back to the motion?
Yes.
Seconded.
All right. Is there any further discussion now? If not. All those birds say aye. Hold same sign, motion care. Okay. Melissa, you on there?
Um, all I have is the port authority meeting on Friday. The board approved or formally approved the remainder of the IEDA grant to be spent on the engineering for the pipeline. So that was good. Other than that, next week I'll be at a conference Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. And AJ, if you're still willing to go, your name's on the list.
Yeah, I'll let you know here within the next few days.
All right, sounds good.
Any, on that meeting in, is it early May there with?
He, I gave Joe, the architect. The two days that were discussed, I think it was May third and fourth, or the fourth and fifth.
Yeah.
So I asked him what time he'd be able to come up and he hasn't replied yet. So.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
All right. Sounds good. Not busy. I will try to make that. So.
Okay. I'll let Jackie know too, so she can code it on the schedule.
Okay. Sounds good. You guys got anything else?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Melissa.
You bet.
Chris today, I don't think. So we'll go to department heads. Discussions.
Um, we did lose a part timer. Jake deleted, put in his notice to spend more time on, so we'll be looking for a part time. Uh, next week, myself, my civil people will be gone Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday to the civil school down in Des Moines. And I just had three graduate jail school on Friday. So you'll probably see some for Justin Brunz. He's. Got both his schools where he's certified now and he's right at his year. So a pay increase for him will probably be coming next week. I don't be here to represent it.
Well, I will be gone next week, just to let you know. So Jackie, I'll be here for me. I can run it from. It's up there.
Mark Thompson put on there, we have security on Thursday the seventh.
Yep.
And safety next Monday.
Just check my calendar sheet.
Anything else coming up? I did have a liquor license.
Okay. We'll back up then.
I would have been in trouble.
This is for. Prove the liquor license for country view.
I'll second it.
Yeah, they'd be unhappy. I guess if there's nothing else, then I'll take your motion to adjourn.
You want supervisor with this?
Well, if you do, I was trying to skip that.
Well, I had. Friday. Um, like Melissa said, decided there's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars left for that IE grant. If it doesn't be used by June. It remains down in Des Moines, but we don't wanna see that happen, so. Said to use it to give to. Free fuels for engineering on their pipeline. We talked to the state, they said, yep, totally fine. Just amend your contract with us. And, and then you're the, that's eligible because it's basically the same, same project you had written, started with. So. Um, so that will probably come through here. As part of the original. Well, before you get on four hundred thousand or whatever. So we'll, we'll have to basically. Pay the port authority, they'll submit it to there, then that'll get reimbursed, reimbursed back through, so it's gonna be an in and out. Might take a month or two to get reimbursed back, but. So yeah, so then that project can keep moving forward, so it'll help them a lot with their engineering fees and say actually saving money on construction, not what they're needed engineered.
That was going mostly, but I did get back Friday for public health meeting. And we had both Waylon and. Senator Brown and Representative Bloom, they'll Kate and talk with us. But some issues, some of the money we get from the government. It's only about thirty thousand dollars, which is still a lot of money. They're kinda dictating to, we can spend that going forward here. And kinda shifting gears on us and Dr. Seemeth and the board isn't very too happy about. What they're telling us we have to do and how we have to use that money, which could in the long term affect the budget, you know, in far as we. How, how they have to ask for money from the county. But basically, it's a dictating to us that we need to shift gears and. Focus more on education than on actual services. So the education part, like Dr. Seemeth and some of the other people that we've been talking to, and it says, you know, that's fine for county, that's a younger county where. You know, you're catching people the younger age, maybe you can save some of these longer term health concerns, but where you're dealing with an aging population like Worth County and most of North Iowa. You know, you, you have to deal with situations and try to keep people in their homes longer instead of sending them to nursing home or, you know, facilities where. Costs them money or costs them. But now we're keeping people at home longer through the services, through public health and through other services, so. Um, but they're, they're starting to dictate that we need to, within the coming year, we have to take twenty-five percent of money we're getting and focus just on education, which is. It's probably doable. I mean, Jesse's, you know, playing around with figures and trying to get it figured out, but. We just, we brought it up to them, neither one of them were really aware of it, so they were gonna probably, Waylon was gonna be, I think, probably today addressing it. Through the Rules Committee, I think he was meeting with the director of public health down there, who's kinda almost trying to slide this through on the backdoor type of policy. She really is kinda just doing a, you know, policy type change or rules change and that's probably pretty simple to do. Hopefully, Waylon will get a chance to address that a little today, that, you know, there's some concerns and they hadn't heard from any other counties. I know Jesse's talked to a couple of them. Public health directors in the area and, you know, their boards aren't real happy with it either, so she'll be hopefully talking to them again. Have their boards kinda speak up to their representatives too and say, it's, it's not necessarily conducive to North Iowa right now. If we're gonna do this long term maybe, but you know, we can't just jump right into this. So that's what's the big gist of our meeting there, just touch base on the budget. Pretty, that's all I have, so.
I'd like to back up as long as Jim is here. Have you pursued that?
I haven't talked to Jamie about it yet. And talk to Jackie a little bit about it, just what exactly I need to get out of Jamie, you know?
Everything. I think you just need a, a proposal with a bid for the size of the building and. You know, and I know that that original plan that was done here quite a few years ago, it had extra space in there for EMA, which we don't need right now. But, uh, yeah, they're looking for projects. And I just was wondering if that was moving along.
Not yet. And that was gonna be our business continuity.
Yes, back then.
So it's a big need for that, or is it, I mean, going forward versus?
Well, right now, I mean, if, if we lose this facility, correct, you know, we've got nothing, Keenans, we could do.
EOC.
EOC, we could do, or else, you know, we, we would fall back, we'd fall back on, you know, maybe, you know, Fertile. You know, or Kent City or Grafton, you know, any of those facilities, but you know, you're, you're talking about.
They're all short term type of facilities. And yeah, you could look at the New Joyce Community Center, we can talk in all real short.
You could not take those up for.
And if we had to move, we'd have to do something to get a long term situation anyway, so it would just be an interim deal. You just need somebody, someplace to go with it, so you do have backups, but.
And that was the intent when we looked at that facility would be, you know, that would be our long term, this is kinda new location.
I think with the security, security committee, that's one thing's been taught, I mean. Backup plans. We have none really, you know, we have, I mean, it's pretty slim, really. It'd be a few days, you know, I mean, fast.
A week, you know.
We don't have a lot of choices.
Right.
Command trailer.
But getting back to the original deal, you basically just need it for conservation, what your, what your needs are for conservation.
Yeah.
So, yeah. You never know, a small county like Worth County might get something.
Well, you don't get a chance if you don't ask.
Yeah, you don't get something in. And I don't know what the timeline is, I would think, you know. The worst of it is, is these bigger counties, they've got projects already out there, ready to go.
Cause that's what I asked Jackie, we didn't know if it's a grant process or if it's just, you just keep sending your wish list or what you actually do with that.
Pretty much the way I picked it up from Jamie, get the stuff to me and it's gonna get. Yeah, they'll take a look at all the projects and then handpick what they really, what they like. And conservation was one of the areas that he said, that's a great project. I, you know, you were here and I wanted to touch base and I forgot to ask when you had the department head, so.
Do you wanna send out that FPH email that had the latest?
Yeah, I'll do that today. You want to, just the supervisors on all department.
I don't care. I just, I just need the numbers, so that way when I talk to Jamie, I have numbers.
Okay. I'll shout again and I'll.
Kind of great, something to give.
Yeah.
I mean, it's worth a try.
Yeah.
Yeah, they might come up with half of it, you don't know.
Yeah.
But maybe we can make it work after that.
For numbers, how much of an increase would you put on that with the time that's gone by?
I don't know. Well, if it was from the original Samuel's.
Probably fifty percent.
Well, they told us when, when we did it twelve years ago, thirteen percent a year on average, so.
That'd at least go twenty-five.
Couldn't start pointing, so. Anything else?
I'll second that motion.